Everyone, it's my pleasure to call the meeting of May 16th, 2022, of the San Carlos Planning Commission to Order.
Thank you, Chair Roof. My name is Lisa Porres, Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos. I'd just like to make an announcement for tonight's meeting. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is conducted both in person here at City Hall and virtually via Zoom. Members of the public have the option to observe the meeting and address the Planning Commission in person at City Hall or remotely via Zoom. If you are attending this meeting in person and wish to provide a public comment, you can fill out a public speaker slip located in the back of Council Chambers and submit it to me, or you can raise your hand when the Planning Commission Chair calls on you for additional or calls for a public comment. There will be instructions on the slides for those that are watching remotely at home, and the instructions will essentially be the same, but those will be provided on the slide. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Jacaponi.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Roof.
Present. And so the next item on the agenda is the public comment, and public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 549, 54.2. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. If you would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda, you can fill out a request to speak form located at the back of the Council Chamber and submit it to the city staff, or you may raise your hand when the Planning Commission Chair calls for public comments. Or through Zoom, you can raise your hand virtually by clicking on the raise hand icon, and if you're on the phone, press star nine and then star six to un-mute when called upon. Do we have any public comments? First, I guess first we'll ask if anybody in the room has a public comment, and then we'll go to any online caller. So any public comment in the room?
Through the chair, I have not received any speaker slips.
Okay. In that case, we can just move to the next item on the agenda, which is approval.
Oh, through the chair, we might want to check with Sarah to see if there's anybody that's called in via Zoom.
Oh, I see. I thought you were referring to when you said there was not any, you had not received any slips. Okay. And Sarah, has anyone called in online for a public comment?
No callers at this time.
You're disembodied, so we were chuckling over that. Okay, so then we can, since we have no public comment, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. Do any Planning Commissioners have changes to the minutes?
I'll move we approve the minutes of the Planning Commission of San Carlos, who met on May 2nd, 2022.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are we ready for a roll call?
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Will abstain as I was absent.
And Chair Roof.
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing, and the procedure for the public hearing is that staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should state their name prior to addressing the Commission, and this will assist staff in preparing the minutes. The first public hearing item we have is for 201 Industrial Road, APN 046202370. Consideration of Design Review Approval for a Freeway Oriented Sign, Wall-Mounted, Internally Illuminated for Curia. Does staff have a presentation for this item?
Yes, Chair Roof, and I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the Commission to one of our newest planners here at the city, Megan Rittlesberger. This is her first appearance before the Planning Commission, so welcome, Megan.
Welcome.
Nice to see everyone in person. Good evening. Like she said, I'm Megan Rittlesberger, an Assistant Planner with the city. This presentation is a request for a design review approval for a wall sign for Curia. So some project background. The Planning Commission is required to provide design review for US 101 oriented signs, as well as signs that are exceeding 25 feet in height from finished grade, and this sign qualifies for those two reasons to be considered before you all. The project site is located within a planned development district, which is governed by the provisions of Ordinance 1312, which states that the total signage for the site may not exceed 240 square feet in area. Here are the aerials to show existing conditions. You can see on the right, the surrounding zoning is light industrial, planned industrial, and then another planned development nearby with industrial uses. And to the left in this image is where the sign will be going to replace Lake Pharma. And so you can see the view from US 101. The proposed wall sign is 81.8 square feet in area, and this will replace a 115.5 square foot sign for Lake Pharma, so it's going to be smaller than the existing conditions, and it's 61 feet from finished grade in height. You can also see the proposed view during the day, and then at the lower-left corner is a view of the sign at night. And to the right, you can see a view from the side of the sign to see how far it projects, only eight inches off the side of the building. The sign will be composed of acrylic faces and vinyl surfaces with aluminum returns and LED illumination, and it'll be mounted to the existing supports, and the colors will include black, white, and purple. This signage area table will show all of the existing and the new proposed sign onsite to see that the area comes out to 212 square feet under the 240 maximum allowed for this site. A public notice was mailed out on May 5th, 2022, to all property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the site, and as of today, we've not received any comments. And this is the idea, or the motion, should you choose to accept it, on the screen. Staff, as well as the applicant, are present to answer any questions that the Commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from Planning Commissioners before we open for public comment?
I don't know if this is the right time, but I noticed if you go back a few slides, there are two squares on either side of the Curia sign. Are those black, white, or purple? They're not white. They look, the symbol above the I, of course, is purple. And more to the point is, what are those squares darkened?
If you take.
Not included in the calculation of the area of the sign, I don't think.
These are just part of the building facade that's already existing. If you look at the, I don't know if you guys can see the slide, but if you look at the existing conditions on this elevation, you can see the red squares that are on either side of Lake Pharma. The other side, you can't see it as well on the right, but the other side of the building is mirrored. So here's another view of what that'll look like with Curia in it, and there again with Lake Pharma.
There they are.
Sure, here you go.
Was there existing?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other clarifying questions before we see if there's public comment?
Yes, just one. Is the light sign going to be on a timer? Will it go off?
I think that might be better to direct to the applicant, because I don't have specifics on illumination, other than that it will be compliant with current code.
Could I kick that over to you?
Oh. Actually, since we're online, if we want to get your comment, we should have you come to the microphone. This is all good practice for us, since we're new to the in-person.
Yes, the sign will be on a timer, either mechanical and photocell combination or astronomical.
Thank you. And could you introduce yourself with your name, please?
I'm Nikki Vetsmadian with Arrow Sign Company.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Sorry, a follow-up, if I could. A follow-up question? Is, when you say it's on a timer, that's the on. What about the off?
So we encourage clients to do astronomical timers, and what that does is it sets itself up to daylight savings time, so, and they can set the parameters however they want, whether on at 7:00 PM, off at 6:00 AM, or, you know, 11:00 PM till 5:00 AM, whatever time, and then it will make sure that it's off during daylight hours, no matter what those parameters are set at.
Thank you.
Please.
Sorry, also probably for the sign company. My question is just a technical one, I guess. Could we go back to the slide on the image of the sign? Not terribly fascinating. I'm just trying to figure out if the letters, so the letters themselves appear black during the day, but white when they're lit up? It's not a backlighting, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So what happens is you've got a black vinyl covering that has perforated holes through them that you can't see during the day, but when the illumination is on, it shines white?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, let's, let's open, so there's no formal presentation from the applicant then? Okay. Let's, let's see if there's any public comment. First, in the room, I gather there are none. And Sarah, is anyone online for public comment on this item?
None at this time.
Okay. If there's no callers, then I guess I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move that we close the public comment period for this item.
I would second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes. Okay, now is our deliberation time? Any thoughts on this? So I'm getting, practicing here with the raise hand icon. Yes, Commissioner Clements.
Very bright, so thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make the comment that I think the sign is quite attractive, that it fits kind of an industrial look and kind of a modern, the sign's serif is very in-keeping kind of with some of the businesses that are around here, and kind of a biotech feel in our area and kind of a science focus. So I would just say that it's very attractive to me, and I think it's appropriate for the building and contextual, so I like it. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? You can push the, you can push the button corresponding to where your seat is, if you have one. Just getting everybody trained in our.
First, let me say, I usually oppose signs, especially on Highway 101. I think they're a safety hazard and distracting to drivers, day or night. However, this, this sign project is a little different than some that we see. I think the lettering is appropriate, the scale seems appropriate. I don't think people are going to look up that high in some cases, but this is attached to the building. I like the lettering, and one thing I did notice that bothered me, not, next door to this project, is a sign, I thought that the city only, I thought the city required that signs only indicate what's in that building and not advertise other things. So I noticed a tire sale sign that was up on a building next door to this, right adjacent to it, 10 feet maybe away, and that bothered me, but that doesn't detract from this. I can support this project. Thank you.
Chair. Commissioner Jacaponi. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Cut for the Congress.
Exactly. I agree with my colleagues that it looks good. I think it's appropriate to have the company name on the building. I can't recall, I know that for quite a number of our higher-rise signs, including the public storage sign, we instituted a program to limit the hours, let's say after midnight, just to shut, to lower light. I don't know if we've done that with any of the 101-facing building signs that we've approved, and I just can't recall.
That's a good question, staff. Do you know?
Yeah, I may need my colleague Andrea's help on remembering a few of previous applications, but I do recall that in prior applications, it might not have been this commission, but previous commissions have conditioned some of the illuminated signs to turn off at sunset, you know, and then turn, excuse me, they turn on at sunset and turn off at dusk. So there's, there had, there is precedence of language in the form of a condition of approval that has made its way to a couple of signs that have been proposed along Highway 101.
Through the chair, good evening. Andrea Martasich, Principal Planner. The ones that I can think of, as Lisa mentioned, that were conditioned were pole signs. I can't think of any that have been a building sign. That's not to say there haven't been, but the ones that have been definitely conditioned are the pole signs that you can see from various angles and various directions, but not aware of any wall signs that have been conditioned that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can support this as it is.
Yeah. So let me see. I guess we have two questions.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I too will support this. I think the sign looks good. I like the design. I like the font, as Vice Chair Clements mentioned, and I think the scale is very nice also for the building, so I too support the project.
And Commissioner Clements.
Thank you, Chair. I did want to point out, that's okay, I did want to point out that the compliance certificate did say that the light strength, if you will, set, limiting it to one-foot candle on the public street. So I don't recall offhand how bright those other pole signs were, but I think it was brighter than that. So I don't think it will probably be very distracting, is my generalist's conclusion, and I will also happily support this and happy to make a motion if we would like.
And I'll squeeze in my support as well. I think it's a very similar impact to the sign that it's replacing, and aesthetically it's pleasing, so I support it. And so if there are no further thoughts from Commissioners, then I would entertain a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley. Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes. Congratulations. Then the next item in our public hearing is consideration of a resolution recommending the City Council amend the Municipal Code, Chapter 18, to adjust the city density bonus, inclusionary housing requirements, affordability periods, parking for affordable units, and make other conforming amendments, and to find such actions are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. I see staff has a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's nice to see all of you in person again. My name is Adam Aronson. I am the City's Economic Development and Housing Manager. And as stated before you tonight, we have the Below Market Rate Ordinance Update. You'll recall a few months ago that we came to you with a study session for this item. Most of what you will see tonight is the same as from that study session, with a few small updates that I will highlight for you. So I won't go into too much detail on some of the finer points, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have along the way. I first wanted to start with a brief overview of what we'll be talking about tonight. So first, we'll talk about the waitlist, our affordable housing waitlist and our BMR unit inventory overview, and then we'll do a current inclusionary requirements and recommended changes slide, followed by our potential density bonus changes, and then the additional BMR ordinance revisions. And those include threshold to construct a BMR unit, affordability periods, unbundled parking, and then these two newer items that we didn't talk about last time are the unit size requirements and unit location requirements. So starting with an overview of our affordable housing waitlist, as you'll recall, all new residential developments coming into the city of seven or more units are required to build below-market rate units. Those units are then filled from the city's affordable housing waitlist, which currently has over 4,500 households and 98% of which are at low income or below. 61% of those households are one or two persons, 18% are three persons, and 21% are four or more persons. And the bottom tables you'll see, see below, are our BMR unit inventory makeup. So on the far left, you can see the breakdown by number of bedrooms; in the middle, by income levels; and then on the right, rental versus ownership units. On this slide, you'll see our existing inclusionary requirements and then our recommended inclusionary requirements on the right. So starting with the existing requirements for an ownership development, we would currently require that 15% of the units overall be below-market rate households. 10% of those are then further broken down to moderate-income households and 5% low income. What we have found is that that tends to be on par with neighboring cities in the area, and we've been working with a consultant to determine the feasibility of furthering that ordinance to gain more BMR units. And from what we have found, we believe we could go to 20% all at low income, which would increase the number of affordable units in these projects, but still maintain financial feasibility for these ownership projects to move forward. On the rental side, the story is slightly different. We currently also require 15% overall, but at deeper income levels, so 10% very low income and then 5% low income. And we found that this, in terms of the income levels, tends to be more aggressive than what neighboring communities are doing. We also looked at the feasibility of rental projects in San Carlos, and with our current ordinance, it's already a very slim profit margin for those projects to move forward, and so we're not recommending a change on the rental side of the ordinance. So our recommendation is to maintain the present policy, but then also to highlight a 15% very-low-income alternative. The reason for that is the 15% very-low income automatically triggers the 50% full state density bonus. And not all projects wish to use that full bonus, which is why we're not making any requirement, but we do want to highlight it as an alternative for anyone coming forward. And so with that in mind, we're trying to come up with ways for how can we improve the feasibility of rental projects in our community, since it's already fairly difficult. And the option we came up with after talking with developers was enhancing our city density bonus. So as you know, there's a current state density bonus that, depending on the number of, the percentage of units and the level of affordability, gives a different bonus, could go in all the way up to 50%. Our current ordinance as written for a rental project automatically triggers a 33% bonus. We also have a city density bonus, and that city density bonus is one bonus unit for every low-income unit or lower that is in the project. It's currently very rarely utilized because it's not as favorable as the state density bonus, so everyone is always utilizing the state density bonus if they're using a bonus. What the city could consider doing is enhancing that city density bonus to make it even more favorable to the state density bonus, and to do it for specifically rental projects, since that is where we are seeing difficulty in the market. So the proposed bonus would be four bonus units for every very-low-income unit and two bonus units for every low-income unit. In this table, you'll see the impact that would have on a hypothetical 100-unit project. So on the far right is our current bonus for the city density bonus, which only results in 15 units. The state bonus, which would result in 33 units, and then this enhanced city density bonus, which would result in 50 bonus units. So that 100-unit project would go up to 150-unit project with 10 very-low-income units and five low-income units. The caveat we want to give with this is that this enhanced city density bonus would apply across the city, so it would apply to all projects. And from what we heard in the City Council study session, there may be interest in more tailoring the bonus so it doesn't apply everywhere, and if that is the wish of the Planning Commission, you could recommend that rather than adopting this enhanced city density bonus, you instead focus on increasing height and density through the General Plan and Housing Element Update that is currently underway. Now, on this next slide, you may recognize this image from the community engagement process that the Planning Division has been working on through this Housing Element General Plan update. On the far right, you can see our existing code along El Camino Real, which would go up to 50 feet at four stories. There's then Scenario A, which goes up to 75 feet at six stories, and Scenario B, which goes up to 90 feet at eight stories. What staff has heard so far through the community engagement process is that the community would be open to Scenario A, which is six stories at 75 feet, and that that could be an acceptable height limit, for example, on El Camino Real. But what we have also heard from the community is that they want to be careful that what they're seeing in these presentations to the community is actually what's going to be built, and they don't want to find out that they've approved something that can then go even higher later on. And so it's already understood that the state density bonus does allow for additional height in order to include those bonus units. So we may see some projects that, if we go forward with Scenario A in the General Plan update, we could see some projects that go higher than that. If we adopt this enhanced city density bonus, it just becomes more likely that we'll see more projects at higher heights and density. So it's something we want you to keep in mind. It's current, the enhanced city density bonus is currently within the draft ordinance that's before you tonight, but you could choose to not recommend it and still move everything else forward if you wish to do so. Then on this slide, we'll talk about the additional BMR ordinance revisions. First, the BMR threshold would be lowered from seven to five units in ownership developments, and then it would remain seven. and then it would remain seven units in rental developments. So any condo developments that come forward of five or six units would be required to now build a BMR unit. We would also change affordability periods to in perpetuity. So currently, they are not less than 45 years for ownership units, and not less than 55 years for rental units, but we do have the ability to make those affordability periods run indefinitely. We would also like to make changes to the code regarding unbundled parking. Now, as you may be aware, in the past, we have had unbundled parking projects come forward where then it's impossible for the BMR unit to get a parking space because they're all priced at market rates. And so what we have tried to do is clean up the language to still allow for unbundled parking strategies, but to make sure that parking spaces are still distributed to the BMR units at a rate that they would have been were it not an unbundled parking project, and that then the, what would have been the price for those units is included in the sale price or the rent, depending on whether it's a condo or ownership project, and that the affordable housing cost for those households isn't going up. It's still capped at their affordable housing costs, and they still get the parking space. And then these are the two items that we did not see last time during the study session, and they're essentially slight changes to the language in our municipal code. So the first item is regarding unit size requirements. And essentially, what we are doing here is ensuring that BMR units are going to be the same size as the market-rate units. So you'll see that the language has been changed here to say that below-market-rate units must in aggregate be no smaller in average size than market-rate units, and then the number of bedrooms in the below-market-rate units must be in the same proportion as the market-rate units. And then we've also just tried to further reinforce the unit location requirements within our code to make sure that these BMR units are evenly dispersed across floors and the general location, and then they still also have access to all of the common entrances. That was always the intention of the code, but the language wasn't as strong before, and so we've tried to clean that up. And so that highlights all of the changes in the code, but I'll quickly go through the recommendation summary on this slide. First, for ownership projects, we would increase the BMR requirement to 20% of units, all at low income. For rental projects, we'd recommend no change to current BMR requirements, but highlight the 15% very-low-income alternative to maximize the state density bonus. And then we have the enhanced city density bonus of four bonus units for every low-income unit, two bonus units for every, sorry, four bonus units for every very-low-income unit, and two bonus units for every low-income unit. And that is how the ordinance is currently written, but it could be easily taken out if you would rather only recommend the general plan update strategy. We would also then lower the requirement to build a BMR unit from seven to five units for ownership projects, change affordability periods to run in perpetuity, and then improve fair BMR access to parking for unbundled parking projects. With regards to next steps, city council review and first reading of the ordinance is scheduled for June 13. The second reading of the ordinance is then scheduled for June 27 currently. And then, if adopted, the new requirements would go into effect 30 days after adoption, so July 27, assuming a June 27 adoption. And then this is the motion before you tonight. I've just highlighted in green the city density bonus language. So if you prefer not to recommend the city density bonus, all you need to do is skip over the language in green on here. But if you do want to recommend it, you could just read this motion in its entirety. And I'll leave this slide up. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, we can have some clarifying questions from commissioners before we open for public comment. And I see Commissioner Bradley, please. I'm sorry, Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Roof. One question, Adam. Thank you for that very thorough and excellent presentation. Regarding the two options that you had up on the recommendation slide, one was to consider the enhanced city bonus, and the other was to target specifically through the general plan update. One of the many factors that we will look at is time. Are both of these options offer a similar timeline to being able to get prospective developers the new slate of parameters? Do both of these end up happening at about the same time, or is one option more significantly delayed than another?
So the enhanced city density bonus would come into effect, I believe, quicker, because that, assuming everything moves along as scheduled, it would happen in July, July 27, most likely. I'm not sure when the general plan will go into effect. I believe it's a year or so later.
Yes, that's a great question, Commissioner Garvey. I can answer that. The housing element update and the zoning ordinance amendments that would go along with that are intended to be adopted by the end of the year. So if that is true, we could foresee zoning amendments being in place at the end of January 2023. So my colleague is correct. We'd have potential changes to the, you know, that's before the commission this evening, by the end of July, and then zoning ordinance amendments as part of the housing element update by the end of January 2023.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you, Chair. And I don't know if, there's so much in here. Congratulations on pulling this all together with help. This is a lot of work. I have several questions. And then I think as we discuss each topic, we may want to take one topic at a time. So it's a little bit organized, because otherwise we may be all over the place. But if I might, I could just start asking questions, or would you like to structure the questions by topic also?
You can structure as you see fit. Right now, we're doing the clarifying questions, not the deliberation.
Okay. All right, I'll just start at the top. For homeownership obligations under inclusionary with a 20% low-income obligation, does that assume that there's no additional down payment assistance to the buyers, and that the affordable price is all they would need to purchase the property?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. When you calculate that purchase price, I didn't see any numbers, unfortunately, in the packet. I would have liked to have seen EPS's study, because it would have answered some of my questions. So sorry if they're kind of detailed and in the weeds. When you calculate the purchase price for a low-income household, I think I saw somewhere that you're modeling it at 70% AMI, that you're following the affordable housing cost definition under state code. Is that right? See, back off by 10%. Okay. Do you also, do you also put in there, assume a 30-year mortgage, assume an HOA, assume PMI?
Yeah, we assume PMI, 30-year mortgage at a fixed rate. We also include HOA fees, and then we also take into account fluctuating interest rates.
Right. So PITI. Do you also do any reserves? I find that this is the piece for repair. That studies show that you can get folks who don't make very much into units, but that if they incur, kind of, kind of like in a lot of ways, right? If there's a large cost incurred, that's the problem that some people can have affording it if they don't have much savings. And so in our program, we traditionally had also backed out a small reserve for repairs. Is that something that you include in calculation, too?
We have not done that historically.
Yeah, that's the thing that most developers will fight you on. And can I just ask, do you remember what the HOA assumption is?
So we do it unit by unit, and we try to get an estimate from the developer beforehand. So usually, it's pretty accurate, and then if it changes, we'll update it as appropriate.
Okay, yeah.
But it's high, and that is a difficulty, because they go up, and we don't have control over them.
They do. There's no control. It is actually something that we hear from a lot of people, that the HOA is just, can go up and up, and it's really unaffordable. Okay, couple more, three more questions, I think, four more. Here's an easy one. I saw that the ordinance included a fee to pay for something, but I didn't see something in here that there's a fee included to pay for staff costs to monitor the affordability restriction over time that gets recorded. Is that in your ordinance?
The fee within, for, or are we just within the?
I guess for a rental property. So actually, for homeownership, too, right? So that if you're going to something that's affordable in perpetuity for a homeownership, or for, you know, for rental, that we need to make sure that it stays affordable over time. So we need to know the income of the people that are in there, so that requires staff costs. So I just was, I was trying to find, but maybe I missed it, that the ordinance lets you charge a fee.
To the developers, yes.
To the developers, yes.
Yes, we do. We don't charge.
Annual.
Not an annual fee, no. Just an upfront fee at the beginning.
Okay. All right, so that'll come into my recommendation. Have you seen any developers trying to use the density bonus to get rid of ground-floor commercial?
Not yet. We've, I don't believe I've seen that. Have you seen that, Lisa?
Okay. The, how did you choose, I have two more questions. How did you choose the additional increment of the enhanced bonus? Because the example of 133 versus 150 units is a significant difference. And I could see that if it really did result in a quite a bit higher building, that it would be quite a bit, you know, to some people's minds, a different project to approve. So how did, how did the ratios come about?
So the primary thing we were looking at in that instance was the financial feasibility of the project. And that's where we started to see it was making a true difference from just the state density bonus.
Right.
Where, you know, it was going up more than just a couple points.
Right.
And that's where it started to come in. But there is the caveat with that, that when you get to a certain height, the construction changes and the costs go up.
Yes.
So for larger projects, it might not be making a huge difference. It'd be more the mid-sized projects that still have room to go up.
And the modeling, did you look at anything other than increased density and an increased number of units? So for instance, different setbacks, reduced parking?
We didn't. The, well, we have heard from parking as well, but our main thought behind that was that you could utilize the city density bonus with the state bonus, and you could still get the concessions to parking and setbacks through it.
Okay. And then one other just clarifying question. The idea that either you could use the city density bonus, or you could use the general plan with a different zoning profile. The housing element, that would not result in any affordable units being created, though. Is that correct? That there's nothing anticipated in that mechanism that would provide that affordability, along with the increased density. Is that correct?
I'll try to answer that. In and of themselves, no. It would just be an increase in density, the maximum allowable density, and an increase in height. All things staying the same, if we weren't making amendments to our BMR ordinance, it would just, they would be subject to the current regulations in place. So I would say that the affordability component that we contemplate, looking ahead at in anticipation of these increased densities, would really rely on this modification before the commission and council eventually.
I'll add to that, that as we modeled the enhanced city density bonus, we assumed that they would just use the baseline requirements for our BMR units. So they would still do the 10% very-low, 5% low for a rental project, and not go beyond that. They could, but that's, we based it off the baseline requirements.
So still providing the units. Okay, thank you.
I'll ask my question then. I'm trying to get a feeling for how big of an impact these proposed changes would have, like sort of the bottom line. And so we have two scenarios on the table, the one with and without the city bonus included. So could you give us an estimate of how many additional BMR units might come about from this per year for the, for the two scenarios?
Sure. It's a, it's a tough one, because what we're looking at for the rental projects is there's no change to our current BMR ordinance requirements. So where the additional units would come from is the additional development. So if we move forward with this enhanced city density bonus, the hope is that it would create more feasibility for more rental projects to move forward, which then is just more units overall, and then that 15% portion gets greater because there's more projects. How many projects are going to come forward is difficult to predict. You know, San Carlos, we have smaller lots than a lot of our neighboring cities. It's harder to assemble enough to get a larger rental project moving forward. We do hear of some that are interested in coming here, and the thought would be that perhaps this bonus could tip them over and move forward a couple of projects that might not move forward otherwise.
It's the city bonus you're referring to?
Yes, that's correct. But that could potentially also be accomplished through the general plan update as well, if you're increasing the height and density in those same areas that we know developers are looking at.
And without the city bonus, is it pretty much just a continuation of the current situation with the state?
Something more so of a continuation. I won't say exactly, because there have been changes to the state density bonus that have been making projects more feasible. And we've, I think just from that change alone, seen more interest than we have in the past. But at the same time, construction and land costs continue to go up, so there's a question of where, where's the balance on that? And that, I'm not sure if I could answer at the moment.
Okay, that's, that's my question. Any other clarifying questions before we open for public comment? I see none, so, oh.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Adam. Very good presentation. And I think, as my colleague pointed out, there's, there's a lot in it, even sort of on the second reading. Like, we had a chance to digest this a bunch of months ago. So thank you. I'm probably a step behind. The city, proposed city density bonus, I've heard it was generally applicable, and then I heard it was only applicable to rental. Can you just set me straight?
Yes, so the city density bonus would only apply to rentals, but I think when I said generally applicable, I meant throughout the city, so not to specific zoning areas.
Good, thank you. And then you put up a graphic, a picture of three different housing units. Can you just go back one more time and say the difference between the three you described? And specifically, if we did act and included the city density bonus for rental, what would the outcome be? And if we didn't choose to put that in, what do you think the outcome would be in existing A and B?
Sure. So the existing, on the far right, is what's currently allowed in El Camino Real. And then Scenario A and Scenario B are two of the examples that were presented to the community as possibilities for increases to height and density and setbacks along El Camino Real. And my understanding is that what staff has heard is that Scenario A, 75 feet at six stories, is what has been generally acceptable by the community, that they believe that would be an appropriate height and appropriate density along El Camino Real in particular. Scenario B was generally felt to be a bit too much, too tall, too close to the street. What would happen under, if Scenario A were adopted, there is a chance that you could still see a few projects like Scenario B. I don't know if they'd be quite as big. They might be that height, but maybe not perhaps as close to the street. But through the state density bonus, there's still a right for developers, if they're building the right amount of below-market-rate housing within the project, to add height in order to incorporate those bonus units that they would receive. If the enhanced city density bonus would go forward, because it's an even greater bonus beyond the state density bonus, I think it's more likely that you would see more of the Scenario B projects.
That was great. Thank you.
Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Roof. And then just to piggyback on that, if they were to go higher because of the density bonus, do the setback rules still apply? Could, instead of being nine stories, as an example, right up against El Camino, could floors eight or nine be stepped back a little bit, or would the developer under the density bonus have the right to pull the whole building forward to nine stories right at the, right at the front of the property?
So it would depend on the project and what level of BMR units they're including within it. But what they could do is they'd use the city density bonus to obtain the bonus units and the height and the density. But then they could still also use the state bonus to obtain concessions. And those concessions could then apply to parking and setbacks. So they could get So they could get a setback concession, and then also use our bonus, so you could see them closer to the street as well.
I see what you mean, then, that we could end up with a Scenario B, even though we were hoping for a Scenario A. I, I understand. Thanks for the question, Commissioner Yakapony, and thanks for the discussion. That was helpful to me.
And if I may clarify with my colleague, Adam, here. One way to look at it, I believe, let me know if I'm correct, is that the developer then has the ability to request for concessions or relief from standards, whether they're the height standard or the setback standard, in order for them to achieve the maximum density that we have, you know, allowed in our zoning ordinance, and to achieve the additional units through either the state density bonus or the city density bonus. So they would have to make the case to the city that they indeed do need some relief, and here's why. We need, otherwise they wouldn't be able to achieve all of the units contemplated, the maximum density and the density bonus units as well. So it's not like they just get it, but they have to make the case that they need it in order to be able to take advantage of the units that they would be afforded under zoning and density bonus units as well.
Yes, that's right. They do need to show that they need that concession or that height increase to accommodate the additional units.
And would we have a consultant that would look over that assessment?
That's something that would need to be done as part of the review of the planning process with staff. So the planner, in working with a developer or applicant, would be reviewing those requests and modifications. So that would be part of the review process in determining what concessions are, are needed in order to reach the unit count under these provisions.
And just to clarify, I mean, my understanding is when somebody needs to go higher, it's because of a feasibility, financial feasibility problem. They need to add additional units to make the affordable pencil, basically. And so, so that's the question, which is, would we have a consultant on retainer to just double-check that, you know, this whole thing is not feasible if you don't get the additional units with that level of affordability? But it is feasible, you know, with our estimates, not theirs, if you, you know, do do the alternative.
That's something that we could do, that, that, we could, we could definitely do that under the review of an application.
Okay.
We have the ability to do that.
Financially, correct. Got it, thank you.
Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Roof. To piggyback on a, on a comment you made, Adam, there aren't that many large property or parcels, parcels available yet currently in San Carlos that would accommodate a six or an eight-foot story. So am I to read into that, that the, the reality is while there may be some eight-story projects, we don't have sufficient number of large parcels? We're not going to have a whole wall of eight-story buildings running down El Camino, simply because we don't have the property size to accommodate that height of building? Am I understanding that right?
At the moment, yes. I don't want to guarantee that that couldn't change. It's certainly feasible that parcels could be assembled. We've certainly seen that in the recent past. And it becomes more appealing to developers as they know they can get more height out of the projects and more density.
Thank you.
Well, if we don't have more clarifying questions, maybe we can open for public comment, if there are any? If you would like to make a public comment on this agenda item, number 6B, Amendments to Municipal Code, Chapter 18, City Density Bonus, et cetera, now is the time to speak. You can fill out a request form, or you may use the Zoom meeting functionality, raise hand icon, and if you're on the phone, press star nine, star six. And I see no one in the room has a question. Sarah, is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment?
Yes, we have two callers. First up, David Tuzman.
Well, welcome, David. If you have two minutes.
Oh, come on in, you did?
Yes, we hear you. Welcome.
Hey. Good evening to the commission and staff. Thank you for the report. My name is David Tuzman. I'm a resident of San Carlos. I'm also an active member in the Pro Housing Group, for everyone, and for the young Democrats. And I'm calling to first ask a question about what quite is the difference between, or how does a city density bonus compare and contrast to an affordable housing overlay zone that I've heard other cities have been approaching this problem with? And then more in general, I really strongly support the city density bonus. As stated in the, in the report, and as was stated by the commission and council, our goal is to allow more affordable rental units to be built, and that, that's exactly what this report is saying, that having a city density bonus will allow us to build these sorely needed units at a greater rate and a greater affordability. And I feel like that should be open and closed. And the concerns about some kind of odd alignment of planets that would allow an extra story to be built on one parcel that the, that some, some people in the community would be upset driving by every few days. I don't think that's a reasonable reason to not recommend the city density bonus. Thank you.
Could, could staff address the little question at the beginning briefly of his quick comment? Would that be okay?
So we have not explored affordable housing overlay zones in the city in the past, I believe. I can, Lisa, do you want to add more to that?
That is correct. We have not explored that. That's something that we could look at and consider as part of the housing element policies that are currently being developed at this time. If this is direction that we get through the process, that's something that we could look at. As it may seem and be obvious to everyone, is that an overlay district applies to one specific area, or maybe a few areas, whereas this would apply citywide. Citywide.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, can we have the next public speaker?
Yes. Up next is Patty M.
Welcome, Patty.
Hi, thank you. I have to say, I am concerned that the public, you've asked the public what they like, and they say this is a height that they can live with, and somehow you're going to just arrange for that to be built over. Does that make sense? You're gonna like, you're gonna, you're, you're hearing people say there's a limit that we want to see, and you are trying to figure out ways where you, developers can just put anything in. And I've lived here all my life, mostly, and I don't necessarily feel that I have seen developers hurting at all. And they've been able to buy land, buy property, buy lots, and put stuff up. And I don't, I just don't understand that they should cry, oh, this doesn't pencil out. I, you know, I just don't, I don't see that. And so I would like to have you consider, and I don't know how you would do it, that you would say, well, this is what we're willing to put. And, and if you're gonna get a height limit in order to build your density bonus, then we need something, like, you should set the height limit below, so that when they get their density bonus, they're giving something back to the community besides just rental units on El Camino. And I, I'm not really sure how I feel about that whole, that whole scenario, where either you okay this, the biggest heights on El Camino, and in certain places, quote unquote, transit-oriented, and not all over the city, where transit is needed all over. Because you can add people to the transit area, and you will not take off any cars from the rest of the city off the road. They're still going to be driving and clogging up our, our roads and our freeways.
Okay.
I think that's everything.
Thank you very much.
You have a big job to do here. Please don't take it lightly.
Thank you for your comment. Sarah, do we have anyone else in the waiting room for public comment?
Not at this time.
Let me respond.
Let me close the public comment period, and then we'll, and then we'll open the, for deliberation. So since, I think we've captured all the public commenters, so I would entertain a motion to close the public comment.
Then we close the public comment.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Roof?
Yes. Okay, now we have an opportunity to deliberate. And let me, let me start by saying, there's quite a few pieces to this, and the juiciest one is, of course, whether we have the city bonus or not included. And, but then we also probably need to affirm or not, make sure we're all aligned on everything else. So maybe we can talk about the, the city bonus to get things going. And Commissioner Bradley, you'd like to start?
I'd just like to start by responding to the last speaker. We don't take this lightly at all. However, in a way, we're between a rock and a hard place. The state of California has chosen to pass Senate Bill 9, which would increase density all over our town in a couple of ways. So we're not, we're not the in-all or the be-all when, when it comes to passing laws. We're just here to advise the city council, and the council is hampered by what the state tells us. We have to build, what is it now, 4,800 units in the next eight years, something like that. My numbers may be off, but it's a gigantic number. There's no way we'll ever be able to approach that number unless we increase the height and the density in most areas. And that would include the whole city with ADUs to some extent. Because I, I remember six or seven years passed when the city council was here, Bob Chris LA was mayor, and the Transit Village passed. And it was four stories high until about midnight in that meeting, and the mayor amended the motion to approve the four stories by cutting a story off, and that's why it's all three stories, two or three stories now for the whole project. So I'm wondering if the people of San Carlos are ready to have three, four, five, six stories along El Camino or elsewhere, along, in our downtown area on Laurel Street, or any other part of San Carlos Avenue, perhaps? Just a question. It's, in a way, out of our control, but we can influence it, and that's what we seek to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you, Chair. I think the, our, our community has a diverse set of interests. And not building more units at our Caltrain station is one of a, is, was a very unfortunate decision, I'll say. That happened at midnight. Because, by the way, we got fewer affordable units, too. We got fewer housing units, we got a fewer affordable units. We had a hundred-year opportunity to do better, and because of, you know, some voices prevailing and some pressure, it didn't happen. So that was, to me, very unfortunate. It's one of the reasons I decided to get involved in my hometown. So in terms of talking about the density bonus and what we think we might want to do with it, I continue to think it's a good idea to have an additional tool to make projects more feasible. I was in a meeting the other day with some affordable housing developers. One of them said that costs had gone up 15 to 20% for construction just over the last few months. You know, you hear anecdotes all over the place. I don't know what's true. And I don't know if it's universal among all different costs. But, you know, pro formas might balance one minute, and they won't the next minute. So it's a very dynamic business, we know. So I think this has been a very good time to look at the feasibility and what could help. So I'm glad you're doing this work. I do think that we, I think it is a better idea to use the density bonus of the city to get more affordable units, rather than just do additional density and put it into the housing element. Because, actually, as the second commenter just said, Patty, what, what the community is getting back, we're getting some housing units, but what else is the community getting? By using the density bonus, we get affordability back, too. Right? And the math changes if the density is just allowed, and the additional affordability is not required. Right? So I think it's a good idea to have a density bonus because you get affordability. I would give my eye a teeth to where I work, to have a density bonus that was actually producing affordable units that weren't already going to be produced. So I'm really in favor of us trying to figure out how to make that work. I also heard the comment, though, you know, and the concern, we don't want to shock people on a really large-scale difference. But that is, to our commissioners' comment, not entirely in our control. State law does weigh into this a bit. But to the extent we're designing our city density bonus, I do wonder if it would be, if it could be used to have a significant difference in height, that maybe something that was place-based could be more appropriate, so that it mirrored the areas that we anticipated more density for in the housing element, but we didn't give up that tool, we just made it compatible where the, where we saw density being appropriate, like El Camino. So that's, that is my thought. My other thought is, is there any way to have it not used, to have it used in other ways other than increasing height? Because there are so many components that developers can choose, because it's really at their election, right? But if we're creating our own, what are the components that we create that they could choose and still have it used? And so I just wonder if there was anything that we could do, and maybe this is an EPS question, a technical question, and maybe, and maybe it would or wouldn't work, but, you know, is there something that we could do that created a density bonus that allowed setback changes or parking changes, but didn't allow unlimited height changes? It allowed some height change, but not a lot. Right? Is there some kind of confine that you could put on the change of one dimension? I don't know. So that was my, that was my other thought, which is just, how would we like it to work? And yet still get back some affordability? So that probably changes calculations. But that's my question. So I would suggest, you know, obviously, El Camino, a good place to use it. So I would suggest, you know, obviously El Camino, a good place to use it. And I think-
I'll try to answer-
I have some other comments on other elements, but I think I'll-
I think we can have multiple, multiple rounds. Commissioner Bradley?
Firstly, thank you, Chair. I agree with Vice Chair Clements' comments and I, and I'll answer her question in the positive. I think there are things we can do to make this work by urban design. As cities have practiced for hundreds, if not thousands of years, it's not impossible. It's difficult because we always have, our boss, not the city, our boss or the people that live here have invested their life savings in, in real estate property, their homes here and they live here, they want to work here, or they work here and they live somewhere else and wish they could live here. I think, I, I'm optimistic about the outcome if we follow our, our instincts and work it through and not politicize it and get a lot of citizens angry at us. I'm optimistic again and I agree with, with Kristin. Thank you.
I'll jump in with my thoughts and then we can continue to discuss. I think this is important. I'm very interested to find ways to have additional housing in general and in particular affordable housing introduced at a greater rate to our city. And I'm a little concerned that without the city bonus, we haven't really applied much pressure in that direction compared to what the state has already instituted. So if we, if we recommended the city council to do it without the city bonus and to wait a year and maybe put it in the, in the, in the general plan update, we may be, may be losing or delaying an important opportunity. And I'm quite aggressive about the opportunity to build along El Camino Real. I, I sense that, looking at some of our adjacent cities, there's some pretty big buildings along El Camino and, and they seem to fit very nicely on that street, the proportions of the street and I'm not personally worried that it's going to ruin the character of San Carlos along El Camino. So be very happy to have even the option B scale work along El Camino, but I'm much more concerned with multifamily housing elsewhere in the city and that it could, could have a pretty strong detrimental effect on, on the neighborhood character or adjacent properties if we just opened the spigot entirely. And this is, I think, the same concern that, that Vice Chair Clements was raising about, about along El Camino. Fine elsewhere, well, that's a tougher question. I suspect that's also what the city council is concerned with. So I guess I have a question for the staff is, could we recommend a city bonus for properties that are on El Camino, but not offer that elsewhere?
That is, is a good question. I hesitate to say we could define the geographic boundaries within this meeting, but you could recommend it and we could develop a, our understanding of what you're recommending and bring that to the council, I believe, if you're looking at, say, just along El Camino Real.
And I would just offer as information to the commission, when we looked at areas where, that would receive the highest density and the highest height increase or the tallest buildings would be areas along El Camino Real and then also on San Carlos Avenue. So our current code, in fact, along San Carlos Avenue, the highest density that we have in the city is along San Carlos, not East San Carlos Avenue, but our other San Carlos Avenue at 59 units to the acre. Where on El Camino Real, it's 50. So actually San Carlos Avenue is a little bit higher for that mixed-use piece that goes up the street there. So going back to the image that we had on the screen and those that attended the workshop and where they were sort of leaning towards in terms of the higher density would be areas along El Camino Real, the full extent of El Camino Real, both sides, and then along East San Carlos Avenue because that is an area that already has, for example, the highest density in the city, city at 59 units to the acre. Other areas would be, are currently being proposed for 100 and shorter buildings at five, but the areas that would receive the great, the most significant increase would be El Camino Real and then San Carlos Avenue.
Lisa, can you remind us where is being proposed for 100?
Those would be areas that are, unfortunately, I don't have a map, areas, let's say, that are, that are, I guess, west of El Camino Real, that are in the mixed-use downtown zoning district and also in the RM, RM 59. Those would be adjusted as well. And yeah, yeah, a map would be helpful for this discussion if we anticipated it, but I guess I just really wanted to clarify where we were looking at for the most significant changes would be El Camino Real and East San Carlos Avenue.
Additional, additional thoughts? Commissioner Yakapony?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. There we go. I, I like, I think like my colleagues that the, the need for housing, rental units, affordable rental units is acute. The, it is inevitable that we need to go up in the city. What, what I would say, and I'll just put it out there, I'm not supportive of the city density bonus as written on the basis that it is citywide. I, I'd not heard of this notion of an overlay district, maybe that looks like along El Camino Real, the west side. Maybe that includes some of the areas that we talked about in the east side vision plan that might, but, or might be on the edges of the development there. It, it feels to me like, sorry, rather, so I think the idea of going up is necessary. I think where we approve as a city and that we recommend to city council, opening up that option needs development. I don't feel ready tonight to just recommend citywide. And I think that our public deserve to take the voice that came out of that, that workshop and know what is proposed and it feels like, especially with just a little bit of input tonight, we don't really have the, the city, our fellow citizens in the community along with us. So therefore, back to, I, I'm not sure where this comes out in the way of a recommendation. I won't support the city density bonus tonight and would absolutely recommend a review of where in the city, the city density bonus that might result in seven, eight, nine stories would be appropriate and figure out how to get that into our planning and zoning
Okay, I see Commissioner Garvey and Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Roof, and thanks everybody for those comments. For me, the, the city bonus offers that additional tool to make projects more feasible and as was mentioned, to bring more affordable units to San Carlos, which is so desperately needed. I also like the comments where we use this tool in places where the increase in density is appropriate and the areas that were mentioned along El Camino and San, East San Carlos Avenue are appropriate. We are going to have to go up and I think we're going to have to go up beyond our comfort level in order to meet the need, which is so great. And to, to plan for where it's best to do that in the city, I think makes a lot of sense. And I understand a lot of the planning could happen in the general plan update, but that seems to me like a longer timeline. But I also agree that the city density bonus being applied citywide is more broad than I think many of us would like to see. So maybe there's a way we can plan for targeted places to allow for this increase in density in a fairly expeditious manner. I would support that.
Vice Chair Clements?
Thanks, Chair. I had a question and a comment. So, you know, our basic zoning already defines low-rise areas and very not dense areas. So, you know, the density bonus, a density bonus that were applied to a very kind of low-density area would only result probably in a handful of extra units. It would not be anywhere near the scale of something that was applied to a very dense project already. And so I was going to ask Adam if he had an example of, you know, is there, if there was a place where, given the base zoning or the general plan designation, if you could build a 20-unit rental property today or after the new housing element's in place, what would the citywide approach give you on top of the state? What would 20, and say it were an acre, what would 20 units become? Do you have any sense?
So 20 units would be four or it would be, I want to make sure I have the right numbers here.
Sure, take your time.
Two very low-income units and one low-income unit if it's a rental project. So the two units would each get four bonus units, so that would give you eight bonus units. And then the one low-income unit would give you two bonus units, so you'd be like, 10 bonus units on a 20-unit-
So 20 would go to 30.
Yeah, so it's about a 50% increase.
20 would go to 30. So it would be a large increase, but only because it was a small base number. Right, so it wouldn't go from 20 units to like, oh my God, they're suddenly packing 80 units into that building space, right? Like it's, I just want to think through that the underlying base zoning already does some of that contextual planning, right? Like that's, but therefore, and I don't want to short shrift the idea that a small increase to fairly small-profile areas would not be really that big a change in character, even if it were applied citywide. So I don't, I personally don't want to take the citywide nature off the table, but I did want to also just offer now the comment. Overlay zones can do different things, right? So one could create a program in an overlay zone, kind of like in an area development plan. So there are affordable housing overlay zones that have, like the city of Cambridge, it has design guidelines and money attached and expedited permitting and, 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 and like an equity analysis of like where you'd put them and where you wouldn't. And it has some displacement prevention features, like there's a lot of different things in different overlay zone programs for affordable housing as an example. So I, I think, you know, we're looking at one in San Jose that I shouldn't talk about publicly yet probably, but anyway, like you can create whatever you want in that area and create a program to go with it and it would define, as you were saying, the areas it would apply to. So that would be one way to, to go about it if you did want it more local. But I, I'm not going to make a motion to place-based it because I think staff has thought through the implications in different contexts probably and kind of trust that staff work. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional, additional thoughts? I guess I'm, my thought at the moment is that it would be frustrating to, to just recommend to the city council to pass it without the city bonus because it doesn't seem like that's making any progress over what the state has already given us and maybe, maybe some, I mean, to acknowledge there'd be, but that would be a rather small impact. And so I hate to let loose of the city bonus idea in hopes of, in a year and a half, maybe we can get a more fancy plan together. And so that's why I was searching for a way that maybe we could have it be narrower, but possible at this point in time. And that, that was why I asked El Camino, along El Camino or along El, if there's an overlay district that exists and can be referenced as, as a way to say, apply the city bonus here, then that could be a way to, really to have a significant impact without, and still give us the opportunity to have a more refined and get more community input on the broader, on the broader, broader impact of elsewhere. So that's, I would, so my, my inclination would be to search for a way to get the city bonus, even if it's only restricted geographically.
May I ask one more question, Chair, while we're still on the bonus?
Please.
Would the SEQA analysis change if it were place-based only instead of citywide? Would an analysis have to be done through SEQA?
I think that's something that we should check back with our consultants, although you would be kind of tailoring it back so it wouldn't be going in a direction of some sort of deeper or more expansive, you know, component or program. So I don't, off the top of my head, I would say no, but it's probably something that we should determine with our consultants if it's, if it's place-based is, is what I'm hearing, you know, just to confirm. But if we're scaling it back, I, I don't anticipate that there would, that would necessarily change it, but we would want to make sure that we look at that as the project description to make sure we're, we're, you know, consistent with the requirements under, under California Environmental Quality Act law.
Right, and I just bring that up because if it does have a different SEQA import, then now's additional time added to the timeline to get in place.
You know, we make a recommendation to the city council. I think it's, to some extent, you know, they're ultimately responsible for figuring out some of these details and I kind of want our voice to be heard, the, the big message and not to, not to get tripped up with, with the details of what our message is. And I suspect that already the city council is concerned about a citywide implementation of the city bonus because in the presentation, that was mentioned. And, but offering the idea of a, I like the word you use, place-based as a, to encourage the city council to, to have a location-specific implementation of the city bonus. It's, it's really, that's our only lever to increase affordable housing and housing in general is to kind of offer some additional market rate units in order to get what we need, which is more affordable units. And so that's a, that's our one lever and without that city-based option, we're, we're not using the lever. We're saying, well, maybe in a year or two, which, which is why cities, which is why we arrived at this housing crisis and, but I do want to protect our neighborhoods and to be judicious and that's why the more focused, the geographical, it seems like a place to be.
Sorry, just a follow-up.
Sorry, just a follow-up to that theme, and this is just a general one. Like, why, why this, this is very binary, right? We, and I do appreciate the, the proposal, why so binary and why now, having just heard about it tonight, and it feels premature? So how else could this play through between us and city council to accommodate, I think, what our intent is? Which feels like we're trying to design on the fly, it doesn't feel appropriate for us as a group. It's not that, you know, my part, I don't want to recommend something to city council, and it's, as I said, it's not what you had proposed, but that's not an indication of the spirit of it. So what else can we do?
So the general idea for the city density bonus to be citywide was that would be the greatest impact. And then our thought behind the option of the general plan, it, alternative, is that that would be the tool that would allow you to localize it. That does raise the concern around the delay in time, but our thought behind presenting that as an option was that if you would rather focus this density bonus into certain areas or change it from a bonus to just a by right, different level of height or density, that you then do it through that general plan update.
And the alternative is follow this path and spend 30 or 45 days honing the option. And so is there something compelling that says this must be read in the sequence that was put forth? Why not two months later?
Well, the only reason would be that it would delay the timeline somewhat. The council is off in July, so we probably wouldn't be able to meet with them until August or September, at which point you'd be getting closer to the January date.
And it would be a lot sooner than waiting for the general plan.
January 23, I believe. So it'd be three or four months, I believe, at that point.
I guess I'll make a comment that we, as a planning commission, we recommended the city, the city bonus back in November 2021. And so it's not something, it's not, not a new idea, it's been kicking around for quite a while, been discussed. Just wanted to make that clarification.
It's true, and apparently the math dictates a fairly hefty upside in order to make it feasible today. So that perhaps was maybe not expected. But I do, in the interest of Commissioner Yakapony's point, yeah, I don't want to delay things. But I think what, the, the third option that we are creating on the fly is to do best of both worlds in my mind. Just leaving it to the housing element and upzoning with no additional benefit to the public. I'm really against upzoning with nothing back in terms of affordability. I always have been. There's value capture that needs to happen when you upzone, right? And affordability is a great value capture for the public. And so I think that, in your minds, I think we are all thinking very similarly that if we don't do something citywide, that if we do decide to do it in certain places, there may be a reason for that. I think that that really begs the third option, which is how to put this program into certain places, but not give up the affordability that the density bonus would bring. Not just zone up and say, you're welcome to everybody, here it is. And that is the profit margin, to, it goes right to the bottom line. So the public needs to get affordability back if the dense, additional density is allowed. So I think we're creating option three, which is, can you do the density bonus in places compatible with denser areas in the housing element? And I don't know if an overlay zone, to the speaker's point, that is one tool, one way to do it. Or it could be defined in some other way, potentially. I don't know. I think there's a, I think there's a trick. I think EPA should tell you how to do this. Do you know what I mean? Or maybe it's by creating a zoning type in the areas and then saying it applies to areas with that zoning type. And that might be simpler, I don't know. And through the chair and the commission, these are certainly strategies and programs that we could look at as, as the housing element is being developed. I don't think that, that this necessarily would negate the potential to kind of fine-tune that as part of the housing element update. While we know that we have a significantly higher RENA number, which pretty much drove us to really think, how can we accommodate all of these units and where? And how much do we have to turn that dial, you know, to get these additional units in place? I don't think we necessarily, or we don't want to convey that we necessarily meant to stop there without looking at other strategies that could accompany that the density, the density increases that are, we're contemplating in the, in the housing, as part of the housing element. This is one tool and one option that's before the commission this evening. But it doesn't necessarily negate more fine-tuning and, you know, the adoption of other strategies and programs that could come out of the housing element itself. So I don't want to speak for Adam, but it sounds like, you know, if the commission didn't want to recommend this this evening, that we can continue to perhaps fine-tune it and look at other strategies as part of the housing element update. But I guess you might have to go back to your consultants and, and provide the feedback to them. I mean, I guess if that's the council's direction, because if the commission isn't recommending this to the council, that would be something that staff would take forward and let the council know and for, and what reasons were behind that. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Adam?
No, just to say, yeah, that's exactly right. We could do it that way as well and fine-tune it through the housing element.
Well, I guess we also have the option of, of making the recommendation, the formal recommendation without the city bonus, but to have a side comment, I forget the exact wording, where we, where we urge the city council to find a way to implement that in an expeditious way, perhaps using geographical localization as a, as an approach. That would be sort of a, better than just providing that additional context, I think would be, make me happier than if we just delete these city bonus and say, go for it.
Commissioner Garvey.
I was, I was just going to echo. Echo that, and the, the citywide process can kick off the process and using, I hadn't focused on using the general plan to fine-tune it, seems reasonable. I mean, that seems like an, I, because it's, because it's happening in January, which once we get there, once we get through this process and the summer, it's not that far away. Yeah. All right, thank you.
If, if I could make a suggestion, you know, we could make a motion that we, yeah, accept, recommend that the city council move forward with a citywide density bonus for phase one with, and put into the housing element, the strategy of within 12 months determining if there are locate, you know, what the locations are that would be best to implement the citywide density bonus. And, you know, so that's kind of a nice two-step process because it also gives a nice housing element strategy for staff to include and work on, and it's very concrete, right? We're always looking for concrete strategies with a timeline that we actually can get done and work we were going to do anyway. So that could be, you know, that, that, we could make that recommendation.
I'll second that, if it's a motion.
Could you restate what, what that would be? It wasn't completely clear if you're ungating the city bonus at this time or, or not.
I would be recommending that the city council approve a citywide density bonus as proposed, but staff within 12 months would come back with a potential amendment to focus the use of the density bonus in areas of higher density compatible with the city council-approved housing element and the site's inventory. Because they haven't approved everything yet, right? So it kind of makes sense that we would say, like, if, if we thought maybe it should only go into certain places, well, it really shouldn't get fine-tuned until the inventory gets fine-tuned and the whole housing element gets adopted by the city council. So, so they could, and that staff would therefore put into the housing element a strategy over the next 12 months to return to council with recommendations on how to create this in a more place-based manner. And also, by the way, like, examine the fair housing implications of doing that. Right? So that's part of the housing element work, that you have to make sure you're not putting all of the lower-income people who happen to be of certain race or ethnicity in the same place in the city, as an example. You need to give people access and choice to different places throughout the city. So that, that would be the motion that I would like to make, so I just wanted to lay it out before I made it. Chair would like to comment, it looks like.
I might want to talk about that more, but I want to see if there's anybody else that has a question or thought. I guess the part I'm still confused about is if we, if the city council passes the, the ordinance now to implement the city bonus and then talks about refining how it's implied, there would be a window of time when the, the bad scenario happens where a super-tall building goes up in the wrong place. So it's, so I'm a little concerned that we're doing the wrong order there, but.
Well, don't forget, development takes a long time to bring forward, but yeah, and it would only be a few months, really. And having signaled that there is potentially changes coming to the program, developers would be aware that they, they'd kind of be on notice that it depends on when they got their applications in, as to what rules they might be subject to. So it's, it's kind of being transparent and giving everyone a heads up. It's not like it's a forever kind of thing.
Yeah, I would support that. I, I don't think there's that much time in between the adoption of the citywide density bonus and the refinement that can be done through the general plan housing update. There, I don't think there's going to be a flood of projects happening. So, yes, so I would support that.
I'm sensing some consensus emerging here. Are there additional thoughts before we ask Vice Chair Clements to make a motion? If she desires. Ready for a motion?
Quick question. Do we want, this is the density bonus, there were a few other.
That's true.
Changes. How do you want to?
Reminded me about that. And maybe, oh yeah, so we've got the formal motion here, and that includes the other items, which we've, we have also talked about those in previous meetings.
I'd like to talk a little bit more about this. I have an idea about how to make the motion.
So let's park, park your, we want, would you be willing to park your motion while we make sure we got everything else?
I'd like to make a motion, but bifurcate it and just talk about the first part, and then we could continue with the rest of it with a second motion later. Because I think if I park it, I'm going to forget it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion.
Thanks. I'd like to move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend municipal code, chapter 18, to adjust the city density bonus by creating a citywide density bonus with, I'm sorry, and have staff include in the housing element strategies, or can, I guess, consider including in the housing element strategies, a refinement to the density bonus to, hmm, apply it in areas with greatest density for the city councils and the planning commission's later consideration. Oh, within 12 months. Does that sound right? And through the chair and the commission, I got that.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, staff, is 12 months possible? Is that reasonable? We could aim for that. I mean, I can't guarantee, but I can say that if we get that direction, then we'll be doing our best to get it done, if that's our, if that's our council's direction. Early summer 2023, or late, late spring. Given that we know it now, we can start thinking about it in advance, so that helps too.
Okay, we have a motion. Before I ask for a second, is there any clarifications or questions? Is there a second to Vice Chair Clements' motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second? Can I, we have a roll call, please?
And I just wanted to confirm this is okay with my colleague to, to kind of do it one by one? It's okay for you? Okay, sure. Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony.
No.
Commissioner Bradley.
I'll abstain.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes. So let's talk about the other elements of the, that we've been asked to deliberate on. And so that includes the inclusionary housing requirements, the affordability periods, the parking, and other conforming amendments, actually, I forgot what that is, and, and the SEQA exemption. Who would like to, any, give their thoughts on this first? Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Roof. Speaking of these in a, altogether, in an aggregate, I didn't have any issues with any of these. We had discussed these previous, I'm supportive of staff's recommendations, I see the recommendation summary is up. So we're looking at numbers one, two, four, five, and six. I would support all of these as outlined by staff in the, in the staff report.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Would anyone else like to speak before I speak? I know I've been talking a lot.
The reason I abstained was I'd like to see this move forward with the city's density bonus, but I'd also like to see an overlay district for this because we have two or three really distinct parts of our town. We have a single-family dwellings in a, in a flat topography area around the downtown and up to the place where the hills and valleys start, where, where lower densities are required. So enough said. That's, that's why I abstained. I'd, I'd like to see us recognize that topography plays a great part in the majority of land in our city. And we have a well-divine little downtown area where densities could and should, in my opinion. my opinion, be increased to, because they're near the transportation of different media. I just wanted to justify why I quickly changed my vote to abstain when this came up. I, I think we're, in, in reading all this documentation before the meeting tonight, I thought it was going to be more about ADUs and, and less about numbers of housing units, I guess. We have to do both. Thank you.
Thank you for that. As far as numbers one, two, four, five, and six, additional, any comment you like, but, but we do want to align on one, two, four, five, and six.
Yeah, I'm happy. Happy to jump in. Thank you, Chair. You know, I, I think, Adam, you made in your presentation, and it was called out, there are actually two new sets of language, one about the dispersion within a building and the average size of the units. And I just want to commend you for putting that in. I think that's a great addition to this piece of work. The other ones I fully support, so whatever, whatever the numbers were, yes, and this great add.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you. I support all of these changes, one, two, four, five, and six. I did have a comment on five, and I, I think I had noted this at the last meeting, which is that I think the ordinance needs to have a phrase on the affordability periods running in perpetuity and just allow a carve out for when the density bonus is used, I'm sorry, is it density, inclusionary. When inclusionary obligations are effectuated on projects that are also 100% affordable, then the tax credit investor has reasons why they can't have something read in perpetuity sometimes. And so I think we just need a carve out for, except when otherwise required by financing sources. Just to acknowledge that not everyone's super comfortable with that, but when it's private financing, they don't have that same kind of tax concern. And it has to do with the read as to whether, I think it's that debt is repayable, that it's actually like repayable within a certain term. And when you take the term away, in effect, it, it ruins the kind of reading that the tax credit council has to do. So I would just suggest that that carve out be added. Little technical question, point. So other than that, perpetuity, excellent. Dispersion, dispersal of units, great. And I know that this is a key point of negotiating with most developers who do inclusionary units. I had a couple of questions, but you know, a lot of ordinances do allow some kind of exception for, like if a project were to have a penthouse, for instance, or, you know, a couple of really high sales price units on the top floor, that a portion of that wouldn't have to be affordable or paid as a fee necessarily, that a lot of ordinances are set out that there's a portion of, not just by like the share of one bedrooms, but it's also by plan, like Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. For like a condo building, we'll have different plans, floor plans. And so a lot of ordinances do have a carve out for community development director to make a decision as to what otherwise would satisfy. And so you might not do a portion of a crazy expensive unit, but you could instead provide three lower cost units instead. And so I would suggest that we give a little bit of flexibility there to the strict proportionality because it might be better for both parties to strike a balance, depending on the project. I wanted to talk about, oh, so in terms of making a recommendation, just to follow up on the issue that I brought up earlier, I would recommend that the, that you include in the ordinance language to say that a fee may be charged to the property owner annually to cover the staff costs of monitoring affordability. And you know, you can choose to develop that fee or not, but at least if it's in the ordinance, you're allowed, you're allowed to develop it later if you need to. One point on off-site construction, and this is not one of the edits that you made. Off-site construction, I saw in, on packet page 81, that there was a 10% increase basically in the obligation if you did a unit off-site. I would encourage you to be more aggressive than that, so as to really encourage units to be included in the building. So in San Jose, as an example, the, the current inclusionary ordinance, the, if you decide to pay an in lieu fee, it would go from a 15% obligation to a 20%. The fee would be based on 20. So it would be going up by a third rather than 10%. Same thing with the, if you do off-site units, same thing. The number goes up to 20%. So the number of units delivered goes up by a third. So, and the margins are thinner in San Jose than they are here. So I would encourage you to look at that as you bring that forward, just to make sure you may, you may want to change that. I think the last point, oh, two, one quick and then one, let's talk about it for a minute. There's a mention about the fact that the city could purchase units and then make them ELI. And I just wanted to clarify, there's another alternative, which is the city doesn't have to own the unit, the city could purchase affordability of the unit, right? So the original owner could continue to own and operate the unit, but the city could say, I want you to reduce the affordability on that unit. I will pay you a lump sum in order, you know, based on the rents differential over X years, I will buy down that unit from very low income down to extremely low, and I'll pay you X amount for it. So that does not require the city to actually acquire the unit. It just would be a transaction, a payment in the amount equivalent to bring the rents down of some estimated amount. So that would, that would result in a, I don't know if that was in the memo, or if that was in the ordinance, but I think that was a language change. And then I think finally, you asked about, or there was a question about, should we look at obligations on the square foot basis, basis instead of by unit? I was thinking about this, and I know that there's some state laws that say you have to be able to, for instance, translate fees to a square foot basis, not just a unit basis, so as to not provide a disincentive to one size fee, a unit or another. Thinking through this, I think it skews what product you'd get. So just thinking about this, if you have to create a kitchen, wouldn't you rather create one kitchen for X square footage than three kitchens for the same square footage, right? And the walls, and you know, all that, the doors. So I think it would actually skew towards bigger or more bedroomed units. I wouldn't put in place something like that because I would rather think through, what's the product that the, more directly, what's the product that they're giving us? And does that unit mix make sense for our city and what it needs? And would we like, you know, is that what we're trying to get? Rather than trying to be like, oh, we're going to end up getting some studios, then more, like someone's going to game the system somehow, or just like, it'll be a weird incentive to either provide bigger units or smaller. So, and I think it skews bigger in this case, but anyway, that was my thought, which is maybe that's not a good idea. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. And Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair Roof. And my comment was on the last issue that Vice Chair Clements raised, which was the consideration of an additional ordinance for the city council to consider to set a threshold based on occupiable square footage rather than the number of units. We always talk about the number of units, and I'm used to hearing policies framed in terms of the number of units. And a, a lot of reframing would have to happen if we did that. And you had some language up on, on the screen earlier, Adam, with the unit size requirements, which I think does a very good job of, of getting to that issue without having to reframe it on a square footage basis. So I, I think we're saying the same thing in that keeping it number of units and bedrooms seems reasonable to me. Thank you.
My comments are that I think these, these changes all help maximize the opportunity for affordable housing without discouraging development. So the calibration, you've done, done the work to identify the sweet spot where we're not going to discourage development, but we're still going to maximize the opportunity there and make sure that the affordable housing is done in a, in a fair way with parking and with, and the size and placement of the unit. So, so I'm, I'm quite happy with the, with all these recommendations. I, I agree about the not needing to go to the square footage, the average, the language with the average size works for me. Any additional comments? Well, I would entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend municipal code, chapter 18, to adjust the.
Yep.
Inclusionary housing requirements, affordability periods, parking for affordable units, and make other conforming amendments, and to find such, such actions are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yaccaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes.
Good changes. Thank you.
Hey, good. Well, thank you, thank you commissioners for a good discussion there. Moving on to the next item in our agenda is item seven, reports, correspondence, and general information, starting with report on recent city council actions.
Staff has no reports from council this evening.
Next item, planning commission comments or reports. Commissioners?
It is good to be back.
Ditto.
It's nice to meet you all in person.
Nice to have you.
Indeed.
Thank you, Adam.
Adam's the only one I know here in person, from my previous commission.
Next item is correspondence.
None this evening.
And the final item, planning staff, planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
Yes, I just wanted to let the planning commission know, actually, I should have reported this on item number A, but on, let's see, it was May 9th, the city council held a study session on the planning commission's recommendations to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and they will be positioned to, staff is, is planning to bring that back to the council on June 13th. And other updates and reports that I have is that we are now looking at June 20th to bring back an update on the housing element to the commission, so lots of good discussion tonight. So we got a little preview of some of the things that the commission will be interested in as part of policy development and programs and strategies, so that's great. And yes, I just also wanted to take the opportunity to welcome the commission back. Just sitting here for the few hours that we've been here, it feels like, you know, just like riding a bike. I'm remembering it quite well, and it's nice to be able to be here in person. So I just wanted to share that with the commission and, and welcome back. We are scheduled to have our next meeting. This would be already in, in June. Yes, we had our second meeting this month, so we'll be back on June 6th, and then a meeting on the 20th with the commission. If there's any questions or things that you might need now that we're back, just please feel free to reach out to staff.
And the June 6th meeting is a, starts with a joint meeting, I think, with the residential design review committee?
I don't know that I got feedback from all of the commissions, so thank you for that reminder. And if Andrea is listening, she'll be really grateful you asked the question, Commissioner Garvey. But staff is interested, and we did send out, send out an email to the planning commission to check on your availability from Monday, June the 6th, where we're looking to have a joint meeting with the residential design review committee to talk about objective design standards. We wouldn't have the RDRC meeting, of course, to accommodate for this potential meeting, but some of the start times that we're looking at include a start time of 5:30 to 6:30 with a little bit of a break before we jump into our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. Or we could do 6 to 7, wrap up the joint meeting, and then, and then commence with our regular commission meeting at 7. So if you need some time to think about that, again, this is Monday, June 6th, starting a little bit earlier, either 5:30 or 6:00, please send me an email and let me know if you're available. I think I did hear back from Commissioner Yaccaponi that I think those times don't work. But if anybody else has any feedback on that, we would be looking to hear from the commission so that we can set, set something in place.
I, I think I also replied that I would not be available on that day. It's not the time, it's the day.
Is there an option to be hybrid, meaning dial-in?
We could do that. It's a little challenging, I know, for just thinking about the technicalities. We, we could, we could accommodate that because we recognize that will happen on occasion. The other thing that I can look into is see if we can have a joint meeting with the planning commission and RDRC that starts at our regular time at 7 o'clock, and then, once we're done with the odds, we would just convene with the regular agenda of the planning commission. So let me check into that option. If it sounds like most folks are going to have a little bit of a, a challenge, we, we would prefer for any kind of study session to have the full commission here, so I can look into whether we can adjust the start time to 7, which is your regular start time. So that's something I could look into as well. Can I ask a question? If we're having a joint meeting, can we seat everybody at the same time? Is there enough space to do this all in person?
That's something that we're still strategizing. Exactly. It could be that staff is sitting somewhere else. So it's, it's something that we, you know, it will, we would be the first group to try and figure out how that would work in a hybrid setting, but we've had, have had joint meetings with the planning commission and city council before. So it would be a good learning opportunity for all of us to figure. So it would be a good learning opportunity for all of us to figure out how to get that done.
And if I'm not mistaken, is the rule about if you have to be hybrid, if you have to be remote, to Commissioner Yakapony's question, that you have to be in a location with an address rather than your car? And that you have to post the agenda on your door and let anyone from the public in who wants to come in, because it's one of the meeting locations? And your address has to show on the agenda, or wherever you're going to take it from? Doesn't have to be your own home. I think that's what the state law says.
That is correct. Prior to times under COVID, that's, those were the, those were the requirements that were in place. I'd have to check with our city attorney to see if that's something that we still have to follow, because certainly during meeting, well, I guess the full meeting was held remotely, so it wasn't exactly an exact, you know, exchange. But let me, let me get some clarification on that for the Commission, and I'll send that out. I think at this point, just let me know what your availability is, and our role will be to figure out all the tough, tough technical aspects. But I do, but I will get back to you on the requirements, that if you're going to participate remotely, if we're going back to the pre-COVID requirements.
I'm available in either time.
I am as well, I think. I'm going to block it out, so it stays that way.
I'm available anytime now, since I'm retired.
Okay, I'll be back with more information. Thank you. And I don't have anything else this evening.
Well, with that, we can adjourn our Planning Commission meeting. Adjourned, I get to hit the thing here.
Nice.
Did you have this?
Good job, Dave.
I missed that so much.